Okay, take two. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Is that better? One of the things we have to remember to do is keep the microphones really close to us like we're kissing it. So, welcome to our workshop for our land development regulations. It is February 25th, 2025. It is 5:30 in this beautiful church named St. Mary's Baptist. Thank you so much, Pastor. And... Okay, we're gonna do a roll call.
Janice Denton.
Greg Julian.
Missy Reckert.
Janine Poehl.
Melissa Locker.
David Levin.
See you tomorrow.
Fantastic. And... Do we have a flag?
Yes.
On the screen. I'm glad you're listening.
(Inaudible) States of America, to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I do have a tradition that I do. Any veterans in the room, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you so much for your service and sacrifice to our country in allowing us our freedom. Are there any announcements? Okay. Next meeting is gonna be March 5th, 2025, and it's gonna be at the Lashley Community Room. If everybody knows where that is, I think Dr. Reckert's gonna put some signs out there, and it's 120 Lashley Court. It's to, if you're looking at the water, it's to the left of the restaurant on the first floor. Public comment, anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda that may be, may do so, excuse me, any clauses. At the appropriate time during the meeting, those who choose to speak must state their name for the record. Each person will be allowed to speak once on each subject, up to a maximum of three minutes. Please be kind and courteous to each other. Land Development Regulations. Everyone do public input first? Okay, Ms. Rachel.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Rachel Berry, zoning official for the record. So, we are going to discuss the land development regulations tonight. We've put together a presentation, you know, kind of comparison, comparing the before and after, the updates that were made in 2024. Do I have to turn off the mic? All right, so the topics that we're gonna cover. So, we're gonna briefly talk about the comprehensive plan and how it relates to the land development regulations, the old LDRs versus the new LDRs, and comparing those districts that changed, some definitions of building types, development mitigation allowances, and examples of building So, the Pundagorda 2045 Comprehensive Plan, Comp Plan, of course, is mandated by the state. Back in the 90s, the state said, everyone, you need to come up with a plan of how you want to grow in the future. So, the Comp Plan really is the how, I'm sorry, it's the what. What do we want to do in the future? The Comp Plan contains various elements that have goals, objectives, and policies to help get to that point, and they're implemented through the land development regulations. So, the Comp Plan is the what, and the LDRs is the how. Specifically, the future land use element, there's an excerpt here from the Comp Plan. It is the intent of the future land use element and the implementing policies to promote compact and contiguous growth patterns to assist the city in growing and developing into a viable economic center. Land use categories permit a wide range of residential densities, commercial intensities, preservation, and recreation uses that create a complete community. There are three main future land use designations that are related to the zoning regulations that we'll focus on tonight. So, the first two, downtown and village center, those two are intended to be developed in a pedestrian-oriented manner. They should have an active ground floor and engage well, you know, with shop fronts and drawing people in. The flex commercial corridor is more geared towards auto-oriented development because it's located further outside of the city center, so to speak. Before we jump into the changes that were made in the traditional Pundagorda area, the table is kind of hard to see, but this is a table of the districts outside of the traditional Pundagorda area, comparing the old LDRs to the new LDRs. So, pretty much everything is the same. The only change was to the neighborhood center district. We removed the minimum requirement for 26 feet of height, so the maximum stayed at 35, and it allows three stories within that height instead of limiting to two. Other than that, there was no other change to height or densities outside of the traditional Pundagorda area. And again, these maps are kind of hard to see, but the first one is the zoning map prior to the updates. The one in the middle is kind of overlay, the new, overlayed over the old, and then, of course, the one on the right is the current zoning map of the traditional Pundagorda area. And so, we're gonna go basically one by one, showing which areas changed. So, what is outlined in bold there is now the downtown core area. So, the districts that were included in that area were city center, which is most of that purple area, planned development public, which is the light green, planned development city center, which is the light purple pink up at the top, and a very, very small portion of neighborhood center over in the right corner. And so, now the zoning map shows it in this purple color. Next, the village center. These are kind of spread out over on the left side of the map and the right side of the map, and it included neighborhood center, for the most part, planned development neighborhood center, planned development neighborhood, and neighborhood residential 15. And so, now the map shows it as this light lavender color. The flex commercial corridor, this previously was almost all highway commercial, which is the gray area. The little pink area there is special purpose, and there's also a small portion that used to be zoned public, and so now all of that has changed to the flex commercial corridor, and the map shows it as that teal blue kind of color. The Maker Village is right next to that area, and it's kind of hard to see the outline right now, but it's around that hot pink area just to the right of the blue. So, that is, for the most part, special purpose, and the light pink was planned developments, a special purpose, and so now on the map it is a light blue color. Neighborhood transition. Now, this is kind of spread out throughout that area. You know, these are the areas where it's transitioning from the more commercial uses to neighborhoods. So, there was many designations included in this change, including highway commercial, neighborhood center, planned development neighborhood center, city center, neighborhood residential 15, and public. And now the map shows it as this peach kind of color. For residential edge, this previously included neighborhood residential 10 and 15, so they were residential areas, and now the map shows it as an orange color. This is the residential edge area. Next up, traditional residential. So, these are where you will find most residential development, most of single-family homes, kind of spread out, but you know, that's where most of the neighborhoods are. Now, on the map, it shows as this yellow color. So, diving into exactly what changed in each district. So, as far as the downtown core, this table here shows the city center compared to downtown core. So, before the LDRs changed, the city center allowed mixed use, but it required a two-to-one ratio of commercial to residential. So, if you wanted a mixed-use building, you had to have twice as much commercial as residential. Downtown core still allows the mixed use and has a base allowance of 25 units per acre. And you also see up there, missing middle types, allowing 30 units per acre, which we will get into the specifics of what exactly is missing middle-type housing. As far as the height, that did not increase. We took out the minimum requirement of 26 feet and kept the maximum at 50 feet. And then we have village center, which was majority neighborhood center before. So, the base before was 15, which is now 25. The height, again, didn't change, didn't go any higher. It was 35 feet before, stayed at 35 feet, and we took out the minimum of 26 feet. Highway commercial, I'm sorry, the flex commercial corridor, which was previously highway commercial. So, the highway commercial district also allowed for mixed use. It required a greater-than-two-to-one ratio of commercial to residential. So, you had to have more than twice as much commercial than residential to have a mixed-use building. Now, it still allows for mixed use, but has a base allowance of 25 units an acre. The maximum height didn't change, it stayed at 35 feet, but it allows three stories instead of two within that same height. Maker Village. So, this was predominantly a special purpose before, and same as the highway commercial, it required a greater-than-two-to-one ratio of commercial to residential. Now, there is a base residential allowance of 15 units per acre, and the height stayed the same at 35 feet max. As for neighborhood transition, this is the area that was made up of many different districts before, city center, neighborhood center, highway commercial, neighborhood residential 15, which all, you know, varied. Neighborhood center and the residential 15 had a base allowance of 15 units an acre, and the city center and highway commercial had the ratio of commercial to residential. Now, there is a base allowance of 25, also allowing for the mixed use. As for the height, there's kind of a meet in the middle here. So, city center allowed 50 feet, neighborhood center and highway commercial allowed 35, and neighborhood residential allowed 15. So, the new designation of neighborhood transition is 40 feet max with three stories within that height. Residential edge was predominantly neighborhood residential 15. So, the density changed from 15 to 25 units an acre, and the height did not change, it stayed at 40 feet max. As for traditional residential, this was predominantly neighborhood residential 10, so the density allowance changed from 10 to 25, but maximum, and the height remained the same at 35 feet max. Okay, so what is missing middle-type housing? So, really, it comes down to, it is the middle ground between single-family homes and large apartment complexes. Our code defines several specific housing types that didn't fall under that definition, and these types of housing can provide a middle ground of not only density, but affordability. So, there are specific building types that are listed out in the code. Those that are defined as missing middle types in our code include the live-work, row house, triplex and fourplex, courtyard apartments, small footprint mixed use, multiplex, and liner buildings. Let's also talk about floor-area ratio, which shows the difference of lot coverage and floor-area ratio. Lot coverage is your actual ground cover. Floor area ratio is your square footage within the building compared to the square footage of the property. So, this graph here kind of shows the example of a .5 FAR allowance, a 1.0 FAR allowance, and a 2.0 FAR allowance. Next is development mitigation. So, there are certain areas that have opportunities to allow additional height and density. They have to provide a benefit to the community in order to have that allowance. Some of those requirements would be a specific minimum of a non-residential area, public open space, public parking, and additional noise setbacks. There's also some overlay districts that come into play. Any development within the waterfront overlay, if they have dock, docking space on their property, and they want to request for development mitigation, they have to dedicate some of those docks for public use. And again, these are limited to specific districts, building types, and lot sizes. The public parking and day docks also require agreements that must be approved by city council. So, it's still not a given, they still have to come before council to get that approval. The specific districts that allow for mitigation, that is going to include the downtown core, which is the dark purple, village center, which is the lighter purple, and flex commercial corridor, which is the blue. And then we have the overlays. So, the kind of dotted overlay over in the top right corner, that is the medical district overlay, and then the hashed area is the waterfront overlay. This map shows properties that are eligible. So, this blocks out anything that is outside of those three districts, anything that is within the main street historic district overlay, and any property that is less than 20,000 square feet. So, these are the only properties left that could even request the development mitigation. So, we talked before about the base allowances, and so this table here shows what would be allowed maximum with mitigation. So, in downtown core, they could request a maximum of 50 units an acre. Village center and flex commercial corridor would both be capped at 45. As far as the height with the mitigation, they could go up to six stories in downtown core and four stories in village center and flex commercial corridor. And again, these require specific agreements. They have to provide public parking, other public benefits that require agreements to come before council. The specific mitigation requirements in the downtown core, which is, you know, boxed in the red box there. In order to get the higher density and height, they have to dedicate a quarter of their FAR, their floor area ratio, to non-residential use. Depending on the heights and density they are requesting, they have to give additional five or 10 feet of setbacks, two and a half to 5% of the property as public open space, and depending on what they're requesting, between .25 or .5 additional parking spaces per dwelling unit, and this is on top of what is required for what they are developing. And again, if they are within that waterfront overlay district, if they have, excuse me, docking space, they have to dedicate between 10 to 12 and a half percent of those docks for public use. The areas where the downtown core and the waterfront overlay overlap each other, that includes the waterfront hotel property, the harbor resort yacht club, and the Charlotte Harbor Event Center. Next, we have the village center, and again, there's a lot of information on here because there's overlay districts that come into play. So, the top portion, if they want the additional height and density, they have to give up to .2 or at least .25 of their FAR as non-residential space, additional setbacks between two and a half to 5% of the site as public open space, as well as additional parking, public day docks. Now, in the waterfront overlay district, they could request up to 80 feet or six stories. That could get them a potential of up to 50 dwelling units an acre, and again, the requirements of what they have to dedicate for public benefit increases from there. The only properties that would be eligible to request seven stories would be within the medical overlay district. Anything in the medical overlay, they request higher than 65 feet, 80% of their total gross floor area has to be dedicated to medical use. So, it could not be a seven-story residential building. It would have to be at least 80% medical use. As far as the flex commercial corridor, same thing. At least a quarter of the property has to be dedicated to non-residential space, additional setbacks, and additional public open space. To further narrow mitigation opportunities, there are only two building types that allow for development mitigation, and that is the medium footprint mixed-use building and the liner building. A medium footprint mixed-use building is a mixed-use building, of course, that facilitates a mix of uses with pedestrian-friendly, ground-for-retail or service uses, and upper-floor residential, hospitality, commercial, or office uses. A liner building is a shallow structure that wraps the perimeter of a block to create a street frontage and conceal parking, and it may contain a variety of uses, including ground-for-retail and/or upper-level offices or, I'm sorry, residential. So, some of the heights that we mentioned seem quite excessive. So, here are some pictures that kind of represent what those buildings may look like. So, this is a picture of the bayfront medical office at 713 East Marion. It's not located in the downtown core, but it is a similar representation of what a 50-foot building allowance without development mitigation will look like. And also, just to note, building height is measured from base flood elevation, not necessarily from the ground itself. So, that's where you see the 65 overall feet measuring a little bit higher, I'm sorry, it includes the four feet that's below base flood elevation. Next, we have the Palacio de Sol, which is at 1500 at Park Beach Circle. This is a good representation of the 65-foot height allowance, which would be the max allowance allowed with mitigation in the village center or flex commercial corridor. And last, we have a picture of the Charlotte County Justice Center. So, the building itself is about 76 feet tall, so that's a good, somewhat close representation of the 80-foot allowance that would be allowed in the downtown core with development mitigation. And if we included the tower, that would be a good representation of the maximum allowed in the medical overlay. And that is our summary. So, I am available to questions?
One of the things that I've noted in reading the comprehensive plan, the citywide master plan, and the LDRs, is that it mentions that they implement the relevant portion of the Plan Pundagorda 2019. What elements of that citywide master plan are included and what was omitted, and who made that decision and why?
So, I don't have a copy of the 2019 master plan, the citywide master plan. This was just a comparison with the Comp Plan itself and the land development regulations. I mean, I can definitely get you that information.
Yeah, I'm very curious about, since I've studied the citywide master plan, and there were lots of great ideas, it was done during the Dover coal process, I think a lot of you participated in that, and in the comprehensive plan and the LDRs, it says only a portion of those were, are included. Thank you.
Debbie Luxon, I do agree with Greg. I did pull out some of the pages of the Dover coal, and, you know, one of the big things that they were talking about is making sure there was a parking garage, amenities. They were also talking about lower heights, especially right along Marion Avenue, but one of the biggest things is it also wanted to make sure that there was public space, like an amphitheater or anything like that, and I don't see that in our land development regulations, and this is one of the biggest things. You know, it's almost like we took the highest and the most dense of everything with the Dover coal and had put it into our land development regulations and forgot about public space.
Rachel, I meant to say thank you for, for all of that, because I tried to decipher my reading and my questions, so thank you.
Melissa Locker, just to clarify, we do have lower heights on Marion, correct?
I believe that is within the, at least, at least a portion of it is within the main street.
So, that wasn't changed. I believe the, the lower heights were still kept on Marion, it was almost giving like a wedding cake effect where you had the lower heights on Marion at 45, 50, I'm not exactly sure what those heights were, but then as they go back is where they can get the height from. So, we didn't change that, that was already there. Thank you.
Actually, it was supposed to be very similar to two-story height, just like across the street is what was the main street overlay, which was there, and now looking at it now, they're saying 50 feet high. 50 feet is nope, and that, that's not including base flood elevation or anything else, and so you're not looking at the same two-story as Cityboro or, or any of the other places that are over there. We need that, and it's not put in there.
I'm 90% sure that it was, was, in the Dover coal, was talking about that 45 to 50-foot height. I don't think any of that changed. Can you guys elaborate on that?
I'll have to look back at the, that's probably in the master plan, so I'll look back at that.
In addition, previously, you know, when they said 75 foot max, when they were talking about it, when I was, back in the day before I was on council, they were always talking about, they didn't know whether they should start from the street or the sidewalk for their height, and all of a sudden, we're saying it's the same, but it's not. We're not looking at the height from the street and sidewalk, we're including base flood elevation, plus, you know, the towers and everything else, so it is not the same height as what it used to be.
Melissa, and Rachel, can you opine on the height? I think that's been a confusion for a lot of residents, as far as, okay, it's 80, but then you have base flood elevation, and you have other, you know, entities that, that can, can, could cause that to be higher. Can you just kind of go over exactly what does that mean and exactly what would you see in different areas?
Absolutely. If we could flip back one slide, I think that might be the best representation of it. So, your base flood elevation, of course, starts at your FEMA, your required elevation per FEMA, you know, at least one foot above base flood elevation. You could have, you know, storage, you could have parking below that area, but you cannot have finished floor area below that base flood. So, your actual building height begins at that base flood elevation, and then, you know, depending on the district, whatever the maximum building height allowance is, that would go up to the top of that floor. And then there's also what's called exclusions that are allowed above that, which would be architectural features, such as this tower, or I believe one of the other buildings, how like a parapet wall up on the roof, and so while those aren't, you know, like enclosed, usable spaces per se, they are different architectural features that would be allowed above the, what's listed as the maximum height.
Rachel, has that base flood elevation changed at all in view of what happened in Helena and Milton in particular?
We haven't, in fact, had any updates from FEMA, changing the flood insurance maps.
So, Rachel, from what I understood, it almost sounded like you were saying you couldn't have anything in the base flood elevation, but I thought that was the first floor where there's commercial and stuff like that, plus parking.
So, your building height is measured from that point, but then below that point, say you have parking on the bottom floor, that would be fine under the base flood elevation. You just can't have finished floor area below that point.
I think it's like residential.
In other words, you can't have any living occupancy space, but commercial could be part of that though, right? In other words, you could have a hardware store there, because it's not considered a living dwelling, and that's the difference right there.
Yep, and you have, excuse me, you'd have to flood proof the building also.
Okay, my, my concern is about, is about height and density, but I, I want to talk a little bit about this, no single tenant allowed. We've got the downtown core, there's no single tenant allowed. Village center, no single tenant. Maker Village, no single tenant. Neighborhood transition, no single tenant. And that's it, that's all of our, that's all of the, you know, potential places that we could have restaurants, or whatever it is that, that, you know, a developer would like to develop. And my concern is that we were so focused on making housing, you know, more available, that's why we raised all the densities. And so, my concern is, in doing so, we've also caused ours, we've shot ourselves in the foot, for, for no better phrase to use, I just, I just don't understand how this happened, and it was overlooked, and it was like eh, because as a developer myself, I developed property with my husband, and we had a really hard time keeping just the tenants in who were, who owned businesses, and this during the 2008, 2009 downturn. And let me tell you, there's, there's nothing worse than your tenant coming to you saying, I cannot make my payment this month, I'm sorry, you know, can we work together? And you would have to do that, because you've got a bank that wants to know, hey, what's your occupancy level every year? So, it's not an easy gig just to develop commercial property anyway, and to say now, oh, not only do you have to have tenants with businesses, but now you've got to have tenants that are limits. So, it's a huge, in my view, it's a huge mistake, or maybe something that, oversight, but I feel very strongly that something has got to change about that. Thank you.
So, there, I might, I
So there, I might, I have some very good news for you. So I've heard your complaint, your concern, and I wasn't really sure why it was perceived to be prohibited in the code and where that came from. And I've been working with staff to try to understand that better. And earlier this afternoon, after going through provisions as they relate to the traditional downtown area, I think it's a mistake to interpret the provisions when you read them all together, that it excludes the commercial and mandates that you have to have mixed use. If you read all the provisions together as they're required to, instead of taking something out of context, our code does not mandate mixed use. It encourages mixed use, facilitates mixed use, but the code does not prohibit it and you can certainly have standalone commercial without residential. And there's no need for any change in our code to accommodate that. I indicated in my email that obviously because there's some, maybe some confusion, it wouldn't be a big to do to amend the code to clarify that, but I don't think an amendment is necessary as the code is correctly read. It does not give it non-mixed use commercial.
Yeah, so like Mr. Levin mentioned, you know, we were really digging deep into the code and trying to figure out, you know, exactly what those provisions were. And so staff was interpreting the intention for mixed use as being required, that you had to have multi-tenants. But he did point out, you know, a separate section of the code, a separate portion within that section, and said, these are general guidelines, not specific requirements. So good news is we can't have single tenant.
That's very good news.
Can you help me with understanding the, there seems like there's no setbacks in many areas. The building comes right up to the road, there's no room for trees, there's no room for grass, there's no room for, even if someone wants tables out on the street or on the sidewalk, there's no room for that because there's no room for people. And so that's a concern I have. I don't, I don't want us to look like New York, with buildings right on the sidewalk. The other thing is parking. If you want to talk about more restrictive, parking is so restrictive that you can't, you can't find a place to park now. And if there was all this development, you definitely would not be able to find a parking spot. And that is only going to hurt our restaurants and our businesses. And that, that's just about to change. I don't have, but that's real good to have, to me, the both setbacks and the parking issue.
Absolutely, yes. So my understanding is that the intent of the updates was to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment, you know, so having the buildings closer up to the road as people are walking by, it's easier for the pedestrians. But yes, when you have things right up to the road, you know, people who want to have the outdoor dining, there is no space. So there's a minimum, but there's also a maximum, so they can't step back further from the road. That's where that range came from, I believe that's what their intent was. And then the, I'm sorry, the second part of your question was parking. So that's a very good point. We were even talking with someone earlier today who wanted to, you know, develop a specific use and the code right now requires one spot per thousand square feet. And for this particular use, that absolutely would not be enough parking. So there is a portion of the code that would allow staff to use the ITE manual instead of what's required in the code. The ITE manual lists out specific uses and the requirements for that. I believe that is changing to come before council, instead of, you know, staff during the development process, so.
Bring it.
I agree, the ITE was actually part of the 2022 prior, and that's what we had for guidelines. I mean, I think it was one spot for 100, you know, with restaurants and bars. And also to go from one to 1,000 just was completely crazy. The other thing that I don't like, especially, you know, right now, we're saying that there's not a whole lot of parking, especially in our downtown area. Why are we making limited parking? Now that, according to what this says, is that you can use on-street parking as part of your parking spaces, you can pay an amount in lieu of not to have a parking space. I mean, there's a lot of things that make it even more difficult for our local, existing small businesses that are going to be competing for these parking spaces. And the biggest concern for me is people aren't going to shop, they're going to leave, they can't find a parking spot, you know, even if it's a walkable, bikeable. We have a lot of people over 65 who just can't walk and bike. So that to me is a huge difference and we should be going back to the ITE rules and regulations on what to do. It's silly to have one to 1,000.
And again, those would require agreements, that would have to come before council, but yes, definitely, definitely noted.
And then also, you know, when we're looking at that, just to state further, we have, looking at a parking garage, you know, for the event center. So already there, they're saying we need more parking spaces, so why would our land development regulations not have more parking spaces required?
Melissa, I'm just curious, do you know what the rules were in effect for when River City and whatnot were built, what their parking ratios were? Because obviously, as you can see, River City doesn't have any, I mean, any of those buildings at all have zero parking. So I didn't know what the requirements were, what the requirements are now. I feel like back when they were built, there was only on-street parking.
And my husband's grandmother still rode her horse into town. So think about it, I mean, people didn't have cars, you know, we used to have that, that trailer park there and people had three-wheelers, it was the first time I ever saw one as a kid, they had three-wheel bikes, you know, with baskets in the back, the older people. And that's a lot of what was riding around. So, you know, the parking wasn't necessary. Everyone has their own car, everyone has two cars, you know, some people in their households have two or more cars. So, so, you know, to me, it's, back then, it wasn't required.
I didn't know River City's been around since horses.
No, no, no. Those people have been on the shore, some of those people. And that's another thing I want to say about, you know, increasing density, okay, you're increasing density and now you're asking for only 25% commercial. So think of the parking that you need for people to live in these, these apartments or condos, whatever they are, that are going to be developed. And we're saying eh, don't worry about it. I had a conversation with a gentleman who's in here today. He said that, you know, it's really difficult for him to walk around downtown, people are parked everywhere and we don't have enough handicap spaces. And I thought about that, I was like, yeah, I mean, a lot of times we just, I'm driving through town and I have to stop at Marion because somebody's letting someone off and it's very dangerous, it's very dangerous. There's no crosswalk there and I could just see somebody getting rammed in the back because they're trying to get over 41, you know? And so he suggested that we maybe have some kind of area where, right there in front of all the restaurants, where we make it for handicap drop-off and unloaded and loading area. I thought that was a great idea, but we don't have enough crosswalks for all these people, we don't have enough parking for all these people. And our roads cannot be widened.
There are several roads, yeah, that are listed as constrained corridors that they can't be widened.
And it's very difficult, even when you're like by Leroy's trying to take a left, you can't see and it's like you're inching out and you don't know what's coming between pedestrians and vehicles. And I agree with Janine, we need some more, you know, handicap areas for, for, because again, you know, we talk about wanting to be bikeable and walkable, which is fantastic. We have a lot of very active adults, but we're talking two different walkable, bikeables. We're talking about recreation, walkable, bikeable, we love our paths and everything like that, but we're talking about working, walking to work, biking to work and things like that. And I don't know how many of us want to get on a bicycle during summertime in the heat and the rain and go bike to work. That's not us, we have an older population, most of us are not.
Wouldn't want to do it either.
Yeah, exactly, most of us aren't going to walk and bike. So we have to have some common sense in this as well. The other thing I know Janine is probably going to bring up, because I think you've heard that in your district, about the 25 dwelling units per acre in the residential homes in our historic home. And one of the biggest things that I see today, I was driving down, I've seen more for sale signs in our historic downtown by all these houses that got flooded. It scares me, how many people are going to buy these, tear them down and do duplexes? Because at 25 dwelling units, they can do it. How do these residents feel who have their home, who were living next to a single-family home, all of a sudden have duplexes next to them? I don't know if that's fully right.
Melissa, we've talked about this several times, this was allowed previously. This is not new. I've sent you the information, I've got heads nodding, this was allowed before, so I don't know why this keeps getting brought up as something that we did in the new LDRs, this was allowed before.
Maybe, I'm sorry. I was just going to say through a technicality, so there was a cap on density per acre, but the individual zoning districts allowed lot sizes and uses that if you subdivided to the minimum lot size, you were allowed to put a duplex on each one, you got 25 units an acre. So that was part of the old code, I think that might be why they did that, but that was a year, so I don't know.
But I know that when I purchased in downtown, it was NR 10. And that's been pretty recent and I know how codes work. I know that people can ask for variances and I'm certain that's probably what happened in 1971 when all those duplexes were built on Harman, I think it is. But that isn't what has defined my neighborhood, I don't think. And I bet you anybody in District 1 would tell you, it has always been single-family homes predominantly. Now a storm has hit us and we're stuck with 25 units an acre, that's not fair to us. It's one thing to develop these, these codes because there's a missing middle here and there, but it's another entirely when we're going to have, you know, lot after lot after lot of empty homes and now what? We're going to have duplexes everywhere? That tells me that my, what I invest in, I'm losing money. And it's, it just kills me that that's what's happening. And it's scary. And a lot of District 1 people are now, hey, before they were okay with 25 units an acre, there's a few pieces here and there, it's not going to happen. Now they're like, whoa, what's going on? So it's something we need to talk about and we need to come to a decision on, because I will tell you, District 1 is ready for that to not happen.
And I believe it was a duplex on 5,000 square feet, you know, the lot size, and now they changed it that you could put a duplex on 3,500, that was changed in the new LDR.
That's incorrect. Again, we've had this conversation over and over. I mean, I understand if Janine wants to change it now, but I think we just need to do apples to apples. This was, the conversation that we're having tonight is what was changed in the new LDRs. That was a different title, I think it was NR 10, they changed it to, to more align with what it was, which was 25, so it's NR 25 now. That was in the old code, old code, new code. What the difference is, and I do understand your concern, the difference is we've had a major storm. So maybe we've had residents that were quite worried about a mass exodus, if we have a mass exodus around, but again, I want to be very clear though, what was in the old code is allowed in the new code, that part didn't change.
But I really don't think that people went into those meetings, the charrettes, and said, yeah, we want 25 units an acre. I don't think that happened. I think people actually said, no, I don't want 25 units an acre, we want to keep it small town, we want to keep the, you know, the small-town Mayberry vibe. And somebody put it in anyway, because they said, oh, it's always been allowed. Well, they're taking the schoolhouse, I know what they're doing, because this is what Mitchell was doing, I had a meeting with him. He took the schoolhouse, which was a schoolhouse, somebody turned it into a multifamily unit and it was 20, 20 units an acre. So he said, oh, see, it's been allowed, and even put it in our codes. That's the picture he put in there. And I said, you cannot, that's a legal non-conforming use, you cannot do that. He said, yeah, yes, I can, yes, I can. And then again, you have the duplexes. Those were the only two I could find that were high enough density, it hasn't always been allowed. It was then allowed on Trade View, I think it was in 2017 or 18, Joan would know better than me, on the corner of Trade View and Chastain, there's 22 units an acre there, there's two duplexes right on the corner, it was Old Dock and Queen's House that was torn down. That was somehow allowed, you know, driveway, trash cans are out front, it's not historic at all, there's bail boxes out front and people are seeing what it looks like and saying, that is not what we want.
Melissa, again, Joan, do you mind stepping up to the mic? Because we're kind of all staring at you because nothing, nothing against you, Rachel, but I know Joan has a little chemistry. I just want to clear this up finally, because frankly, we've gone over this over and over. And again, if you want to discuss it, not that we can, because we're under SB 250, but if you want to try and change that down the road, I'm open to that. But again, we're talking, you know, this whole conversation is about what the LDRs were and what they are now. That was allowed in the old code. Nothing has changed except for what, because you and I had this conversation too, was that the title changed, for lack of better words, right, to align with it. But at the end of the day, 25, they've always been, even before charrettes, because they were in the old code, correct?
I am not 100% sure. I believe they were, it was the same, because we didn't change that portion of it, but I am, I am not 100% sure on that. So I will have to look back at that.
And I know you sent me a couple emails that I can share, right? We actually went down, it's not even, it's not a, it's not a very, you have to look at it as far as measuring and what was allowed, what was out, what the title was changed and whatnot, but it was allowed before. So again, you want to talk about changing that for the future, that's one conversation, but talking about that's something that was changed in the new LDRs, that's just simply incorrect.
Yes, I'd really rather focus on the future than the past.
I understand. I get that, but what I'm hearing is, well, this was changed, that wasn't changed, that always was. I think what we're having.
That's all been cleared.
What we're having, oh, I'm going to finish my thought. The conversation we're having is, because we've had a storm, there might be people that now want to change things, they don't know what the codes were in there. And now the concern is, they didn't know what's in the old codes, now they're noticing it in the new codes, okay, it was already there. Do we want that downtown? That's two different conversations. And if that's something that the downtown district doesn't want, then we should take a look at it, but it was in the codes to begin with.
Also, looking where we constantly talk about how we want to offset our property taxes by having more commercial, always talk about that. How did we go from two to one commercial to 75% residential? Our infrastructure cannot handle that. We'd have to get more police and fire, we need to look at our water, our piping systems, there's a lot of issues going on. So it's almost like we've just completely changed what we have anticipated, including in the comprehensive plan. It still talks about Jones Loop Road actually reducing, you know, the residential burden because it was all commercial and yet it was changed to residential. That didn't get changed in the comprehensive plan.
Yes, there definitely was a lot of increase there. I apologize a lot for trying to thought.
Right, and like Janine was just saying, you know, we changed these land development regulations with having very few properties really that, that would be affected by it. And now, and which is kind of crazy when we're so far built out, who are we catering to to make these extensive, you know, changes, number one? But number two, you know, did we even look to see what was happening? We are in an estuary, we are protected by doing this, what are we doing in harm's way to our environment and for emergency evacuation and our infrastructure?
Well, you said that, but on the other hand, you went ahead and wanted to put a moratorium on storage units. When you talk about water and not needing any police and commercial, that's it right there. So on one hand, we're talking about needing more commercial, on the other hand, we're talking about putting moratorium on commercial items, so.
If I might add, for any development, whether it's residential, commercial, they have to go through the concurrency process, where, you know, there has to be enough garbage pickup, water service, school concurrency, all of those things have to be available or they don't get their sign off. Or they enter into a developer's agreement, put all kinds of bonds in place so that they pay for those improvements.
And let's be clear about the no moratorium, it's a temporary moratorium so that we can figure out the right location for those facilities and don't end up with them on our main corridor. We've got plenty of them and there is a right place for them. We're not opposed to having that commercial development, we want it in the right part of our town.
And I don't see also where we have our transportation study. We can't expand our roads, where is the transportation for all this new development and residential and increased density?
So Melissa, again, and I want, I want you to make sure everybody heard that, just because of whatever's in the code, regardless of what the code would be today, tomorrow or in the future, if there isn't enough resources available, it won't happen. So in other words, they have to go through a study. We don't just put things out there and say, well, we hope we have enough water, we hope we have enough police and fire. There are studies done, there are, there are different avenues that the city has as a plan. These are not just erroneous things that are put in if they can't support infrastructure, they can't support A, B, and C. These are a lot of opinions that I'm hearing, I'm not seeing direct studies that say infrastructure can or can't handle it. So I think we need to be very careful with that and understand. So I think we need to be very careful with that and understand that the city does have to go through plans to make sure that what is developed, they can support.
Well, we all know that the roads are too restrictive around downtown, around the core. That Rachel said it herself. And we also are looking at 50 units per acre, and that's just not possible with our water and tight roads. It's just not possible.
And that's your opinion, though. Have we had any studies or facts that have said otherwise? I mean, I'm just curious. We're sitting here saying--
Yeah, we can't water the lawns. That's a study.
So that means we can't have any other growth, whatever. I mean, we have a water restriction for our irrigation. We have no restriction on anything else. I think we need to be very careful. We're putting statements out that Shell Creek's drying up, and the water's drying up, and all this other stuff that has been proven and debunked to be not correct. So putting statements out like that is, I think, sets a very dangerous precedent.
So the other thing that we haven't done, like when the old, like, city marketplace was going through, no transportation studies were done. Do you look at the effects? So here we are approving, we are in a quasi-judicial, already to approve something, when we didn't do all the proper studies.
For city marketplaces? What did we improve for city marketplaces?
I think you're referring to the plan development that they brought forward.
Exactly, and they were giving it, that they were trying to bring forward.
So the development plans that they recently submitted, that was one of the--
No, I'm talking, I'm talking all the way back a couple of years ago.
It's not about councils, certainly. But that never came to council. That went through--
It was--
Guys, never came to council.
Fisherman's Village never came to council. We were talking about--
Neither did guys. They went to the--
They talked about it in council.
They went to planning, and then they pulled it after that. It never came to council.
It was at council. I talked about it in council meetings. They wanted 72 wall units per acre.
I don't know at what point. They did withdraw it, but I don't--
They withdrew it. They withdrew it. Didn't have that.
I think, wasn't your husband in the interview? Yes, so it came to council.
Still, we'd really like to focus on the future.
Which I definitely agree, and I think that we all agree to have an interpretation done on what we can do to change our land development regulations as well.
Any word on that?
No word on that.
Didn't we just get, because you went to the Attorney General, right?
Yes.
Didn't we just, or DeSantis just appointed one?
I think so. It may take a while.
Also, you know, one of my biggest concerns is that we look at waterfront overlay and some of these overlays that we have, and it's to intensify development. And again, it's almost like we're intensifying development just for these few pieces of property. And I know you're supposed to say we have more boat ramps, we have all these things, but when you read it and trying to do it, waterfront overlay was only 10 feet off of the seawall, which is a little scary to me, especially if you're going, you know, how many stories high. And I think that we've had other issues with condominiums and stuff after such a height that they're starting to fail, especially again, when we are in this close to the environment. So are we putting pylons in the ground, or what is that going to do? Is it going to fail?
I'm sorry, something's failing. Did I hear that right?
Yeah, over in Miami, the condos are failing.
But not condos.
Janine, can you-- Yeah, so right now, there is a new law that's been passed in the last couple of years where condos, if anyone lives in a condo unit, and it's an older condo unit, they have to have a certain amount of money set aside to have all these studies done, and they're engineer studies. They're not shoot, they're very expensive, to make sure that the condo is structurally sound. So any place that's within three miles, I believe it is, within water, has to have all this extra money. And so what it's creating is a situation where people do not want to purchase older condo units. And it's very, very scary, because, you know, that law's been put in place, and it's for the protection of the people.
Is there a height limit on that? I know everything in Miami is--
Uh, yes, it's over, anything three stories are over. And that too will probably drive developers to not really wanting to build to that scale. That's just my guess.
Three stories or higher, at least 30 years.
We want to open it up to public. If anybody would like to speak, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Kaye Eames. And can we talk more than once? Because I just feel free. So on the 80 feet, Rachel, so if it's 80 feet regulatory, we add to that whatever the base flood elevation is. I think, for instance, Wyvern is seven. So you add seven plus 80, and then on top of that, you can add up to 20 feet for the scheduled 7.6 items. And that can include towers, what have you. It can also include bathrooms, elevator lobbies and things like that. So we could get to a total of over 100 feet. I think that Wyvern base flood elevation is about six or seven. On the Fisherman's Village plans that they had submitted, they showed some of their base flood elevations on their sketches to be about 12 feet. So that could get the actual building heights to be much higher, correct?
Yes, there is a difference between physical height and the definition of--
Okay, thank you very much. And then also, another point I wanted to mention is when you have one parking place for a thousand-square-foot building, that means Dean's, which has 4,000 square feet under air, would be required to do four parking places. And also in the code, correct me if I'm wrong, but it states that you can also count a parking place that was within 600 feet of your unit. So I can count one that's by the exit sign. You can count one that's by the exit sign. You can count one by the exit sign. And all of a sudden, we're all using the same lot of the off-street parking. So I do think that needs to be addressed. I have other things for you to--
Hi, Jeff Lustig. Did you just hear that in the airport, there's $350 million of a budget for construction? At the council, at the commissioners' meeting today, they are almost refusing to attempt to build anything. Remember when we were going to have a $6 million parking garage? People are terrified to build anything, because they don't know what it's really going to cost, and because of supply chain issues. And that was, as I remember, was the big savior, was we're going to put the parking lot on the cultural center, the event center. And without that, it really wouldn't work.
Are you calling for comment?
Yes.
Come on, Darren. Go, baby.
I have time. I have a couple of things. And maybe these have been settled, but was outside as well, too. Wonderful presentation. I trust we'll all get a copy or have it outlined, so. A lot of information here, things I would like to brush up on as well, too. I found it interesting, and I've sat through the charrettes and so many hours of discussion. I'm not sure that necessarily all of you have. Some of them, I think, you have. I was sort of interested in the change, how we got from stories to feet, back to stories again. I remember previous councils saying, no, it's not stories, it's feet. We're going to talk feet from now on. So now we're back to stories again. But the question with that is, how are we measuring feet? Is it measured in stories or is it feet? It can't be both. You know, what is a story in feet? And so forth. So I think we're saying, yeah, we're stories, but we have maximums as well, too. So it's kind of a strange way of defining it. Accretments, accretments, I think that's what we used to call the area above the building. And I know in earlier days, I think it was considered 20%, you were given 20% for that. I'm not sure in my hearing or my memory of what it was, whether we still have a definition of that area, or that's included in the all-in. Remember the all-in heights we talked about? Needs a little bit of clarification. And I think the question was asked earlier about the base flood elevation during our flooding experiences. Did we reach the base flood elevation during that? I think the answer was, we didn't know. I found it interesting, the conversation a little bit earlier, that it requires legal interpretation and that there lacked clarity of it. I think the words were, well, that was the intention. The intention was the word. It shouldn't be intention. There should be clarity associated with it. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Noel Hyde. We have a lot of discussion about infrastructure limitations here in the city. But isn't the county that's approving all of this development to the south and to the north of our town? We're 15 and a half square miles in a county of about 861 square miles. We're a very small area. Road-wise, they all run through Punta Gorda. 41 comes through, 17 comes through. So all this development, south of town and north of town, is coming through Punta Gorda. We're not going to be enlarging 41 coming through town. We're not going to be enlarging bridges. And our water supply area is way bigger than the city. Goes out way north and east of our town, all of this. Do we have no control over who is going to be demanding our water because of our responsibility? And who is going to be developing properties that are going to unload all this traffic on our two main roadways? I guess my question would be, does the county talk to us about this? No. They just expect that we can handle the traffic. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Bob Fritz. I want to talk about the Flex Commercial Zone. Basically, Chase Bank to Airport Road. Previously, it was commercial. And the name right now, Flex Commercial, means you can put 45 units per acre of residential in that zone, right on 41. Think of the ghetto properties, two of which are empty right now. All residential, 45 units per acre. Do we really want that? We need more commercial. You know, 150 acres was given away on Jones Loop Road that was owned commercial. It's going to be residential. Commercial property can't be homesteaded. They paid a full vote on taxes. They don't have any students, no two schools. We need commercial. That residential component of that Flex Commercial should be gone, completely gone. Downtown, 100% impervious coverage, which means not one tree, not one blade of grass, just paved over. We're not New York City downtown. We're not Chicago downtown. We're a quaint little city, if you will. More like a village than a city, actually. No landscaping, buildings built right out to the curb, out to the sidewalk. It's crazy. Well, where does the water go? You know, and that's the problem. It goes into the buildings now, especially the older buildings. Why do that? I can't understand that at all. Parking. It's interesting, in the code, you know, where it says 1.5 units per acre downtown. Then it says all other districts, two units, two parking spaces for current residential density, residential unit. Our parking problem is not in Bernstow, Iowa. It's not in Punta Gorda, Iowa. It's downtown! So why only have 1.5 there, when we have two everywhere else? Thank you.
Hello, Bob Seifert. I live in the historic district. And I too would like to talk about us becoming a village of duplexes. We have, these last two storms have really inundated so many of our older homes that sit on the ground. These homes will be replaced. They will be demolished first. And when they demolish them, my house sits on three planted lots in the horse and bug days, when you didn't need a garage and two cars. So they're 40 by 90 lots. Those three lots under my house would be six duplexes. And we just don't need that. And I think, I think one of the solutions might be, you know, we have a U.S. historic district in the city. I'm not talking about these buildings. I'm talking about the district. And it was passed in 1991, change number seven. And what it did was, it said from Reda to Berry to to West Virginia to Taylor. That is our registered, U.S. registered property. If we retain, if we only allow, if a house, a single-family house was destroyed by demolition, only allowed one single family to be built there, I think that could pass muster under, or Harris or anything else, in order to protect our historic district. You may not be able to do that in the whole city, but I think if you did that, and did that just for that district, we might be able to do something. I did pass this by a land use attorney. I know Mr. Levin is educated, too. So that's something I think we should try. If we're going to change the LDRs, let's try to do something possible, I think. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
TJ Thornbry. Great presentation, Rachel. Thank you very much. I did owe what Bob said. I think we actually had a conversation with a gentleman that, on top of what Bob said, I'd like to put, let's fast-track that. Let's say, okay, you're in a historic district, a historic home. It makes sense. Replace that home in the same architectural style, potentially. Maybe a little bit more storage footage, if possible, for today's modern requirements, but then fast-track it. Because I'm curious as to how many inquiries, we're getting a lot of inquiries on duplexes. In the past, you know, for me, duplexes have been investor-driven. So the numbers don't technically usually work in downtown. So I think in 20 years, I have yet to get an inquiry from a customer wanting to build a duplex downtown. It's just that dirt alone usually makes the cost prohibitive from investment scale. So I'm curious to how much, you know, how much demand that we're seeing for inquiries on duplexes. And stuff, because usually the market doesn't allow it to happen in the first place. And let's hope that if we can fast-track ideas where a single-family home has to go, where its historic single-family was, then that helps save the property values to where investor-driven duplexes just isn't feasible. So, thank you very much, Alex.
Can I say anything about the duplexes next to you? My friend.
I also, I'm not a builder or a developer, and a lot of what's being said is kind of over my head. But what I'm hearing is that everybody's talking about these duplexes. So if some council or governing body years ago made a mistake and let them in, and the last council continued it, well, let's not point fingers. Let's just get them out. Let's do something and get rid of it. Instead, it's just wondering who did it, and who didn't do it, and who continued it. Thank you.
My name's Mark. I'm born and raised here, part of the younger generation here. My biggest concern for Punta Gorda would be, there is certain aspects of it that I don't want to be changed. But we, like, everybody's just been, you know, repeating each other, basically. Parking is basically a big thing. The duplexes, I really don't see. I piggyback off of TJ. They're duplexes I don't really see as an issue. Like he said, there isn't really anybody that's actually paying to put a duplex somewhere. I have lived in Punta Gorda, I've lived on West End and McGregor, in a duplex. And there was a single-family home, just basically off of building code. And there was a single-family home, just basically off a building code, built right behind it, that's, you look right underneath the house. So duplexes, to me, aren't that big of a deal. My question would be, I guess, is, what are we doing? I totally understand the historic district point of things, keeping, you know, like what TJ said, keeping the historic homes historic, basically, kind of like what they did with the old fishing things out in the harbor, fishing houses. Keeping those historic would be ideal. And then, you know, if we had to, what is, what about all the property? I've grown up here, there's a property that, it was, I forget what it was zoned at, that's over across from Salty Tarpon and all that over there that's never, I mean, after Charlie, it was, there was a whole bunch of business, but it just, it's become vacant. There's parking lots that aren't even being used. We talked about parking, you know, for anything like that. All those parking lots are empty, you know, they've been empty for fifteen years. If we could see what we're going to be utilizing that stuff, try to not just focus on historic downtown, but also the city as a whole, and incorporating, you know, pushing, if we have to push business towards those side streets, that's fine. You know, people will, people will go. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Taylor. I grew up in this town, seventy years old, so I've been running for a while. As I can look around, tricky woods, there are all kinds of duplexes, all over the place. Even there's one going in behind the museum. It's too much. It's not going to be there if you keep that one. Every time I look around, there's another place being cleared.
Okay, yes, again, in regards to infrastructure and too many people, too many duplexes, density of fifty, et cetera, et cetera. If a plan meets the LDRs and the codes, they don't have to get another approval, right? I mean, once you've already met everything.
If they meet the minimum requirements, yes, but the fifty units per acre would require the mitigation, which requires a council approval.
Phil Page. My first point is, there's way too much emphasis put on a walkable city. If the downtown businesses were forced to rely on the customers that could walk, they probably own a lot of business. I know, I live, a lot of the residents in Burnstour Isles, Burnstour Meadows, and on down on the south side, less than half of the city is even close to being walkable. And that emphasis needs to change. The other part that I would look at is certainty. Certainty from a resident's perspective, what am I going to have next door, next week, next year, five years from now? You know, giving the options to buy in on more height and these different options is just setting ourselves up for lawsuits. We got this issue that I don't fully understand, but property rights. If it's in the code, they think they can have it. And that's going to end up sending us up for more lawsuits. We need to have it clearly spelled out, no exceptions, this is the way it's going to be. And just close the book on it. Thank you.
I agree with everything everybody has said so far, but I want to reiterate trees, sidewalks, setbacks. Have you ever been to a place or in the middle of a parking lot somewhere, and the sun is shining, it's ninety-five degrees, and there's nothing? Tree, almost dead, yard. Not a tree in sight, and all you're looking for is, you know, I wear my sunglasses all the time because I have to. We need to think more about the green and the width of the sidewalk and the disability parking. And I think that one idea of having a couple of spots downtown where people can unload and get, great, because usually the other guy can walk. So, you know, he can find that parking space. Height and density. I don't know that I would be so opposed to height if it wasn't how many. If you really take an acre of land and then you build them, and think about this, anywhere you go in PGI or Burnstour Isle, it's a quarter of an acre. So put four houses together, you have an acre of land, and now put fifty people in that spot. That gives you an excellent idea of why you don't want this. Lower the density. Thank you.
TJ Thornberry, for the record. Could you explain to the group here, everything that you guys have talked about, everything that you've heard, and with the future in mind, what would it take to just take everything that you guys have talked about, all your main concerns, put them together in an organized fashion? And so what is the process to amend the, it would be the comp plan, right, and then the LDRs?
Yeah.
But I thought the comp plan, so maybe that, could you explain that relationship? So for tonight, where do we go as a city? Where would, what would the process be for council then to amend these items to just make these concerns fix and move forward? Thank you.
So the comprehensive plan is kind of like the master plan. So it's what we're looking to in the future. So our land development regulations can be more restrictive right now at this point, knowing that in the future, we have the opportunity to expand into what's there. So that's kind of the way it is. And even if we went back to the existing twenty-twenty-two land development regulations, it still falls within the comprehensive plan, because comprehensive plan is bigger, allows more stuff. So it's not like we're doing any violations with the comprehensive plan if we change our land development regulations. Land development regulations can be changed here, it doesn't have to go to the state. Comprehensive plan has to go to the state for approval. Does that make sense? And then what we want to do is, we want to have workshops and have everybody have an input. What does the community want to see?
Well, so there's a two-year process that we, we're giving a chart that shows all the steps in that two-year process that we're walking into and moving forward into that. And this is one of the first steps, but it will include a number of other public engagements, input, and then hopefully we'll come to an agreement on the changes to the LDRs, but it's going to take us a while. And we need to publish that chart, if we could.
Derek Oring, Punta Gorda Isles. I actually kind of want to see if the public and the council would consider flipping this conversation a little bit. I think I mentioned last night at the workshop that, since I've been here in two thousand and seven, and I work in the development industry, I have seen the city go through two of the biggest run-ups in Florida real estate history. Crashes as well, but that also happened at a time when we had record-low lending, and at least one of those times during the time we had available workforce, cost of construction was low, and yet nothing got built in a huge chunk of our downtown. I don't think that tweaking the LDRs, as we saw today, wasn't that big a change from what was there. I don't think that's going to make the difference. I'm asking the council, think about what it is we want from an infrastructure standpoint, some of the other questions that have come back. You know, should we be doing complete streets? Should we be doing, you know, narrower right-of-ways or allow for bike paths or more pedestrian space for outdoor dining? Should we, I know the city's working on a plan for not only its infrastructure, but also our pedestrian walkways. A parking garage is necessary. If we go to IT and then we have a bunch of small lots, everyone has to have a seat in parking for their individual lots. Part of that contribution, I believe, that was, pooled money together to build a parking garage. I think if we decide first what we need for the city, and then what the fiscal responsibility would be to do that, then we can change the code. Because I think right now, I think the market's going to keep development off the books for quite a while, so we have a little bit more breathing room. But when we talk about the development that's happening down Burnstour Road, right now the county's pushing to put a lot of commercial use down there. So where those homeowners, those ten thousand, fifteen thousand feature homes, would have previously driven to Punta Gorda and would have increased our demand for a downtown commercial corridor, it's going to be easier for developers to build down there. They're not going to have to deal with all the infrastructure and the constraint system. And generally, when we have these kind of greenfield opportunities, you can do the win-win. Build us a new fire station, exchange for extra density. But in the downtown core, or commercial core is, it's more a zero-sum game. And every time we're playing a game whack-a-mole, if it's parking, then it's cost. If it's, if it's density, then it's height. There's always something we're trying to deal. So I'm thinking, can we look at working it backwards and figure out what we need so that we can try to work with developers on an individual basis to get those additional concessions, to have them? If we had projects out at the end of Marion, out towards the park, there's still some open land up there. Could developers there help pay for improvements to Marion all the way along to make it easy for people to ride their bikes back and forth? I mean, there's a lot of accidents, there's a lot of risk in the aisles. Could those kind of things be extended to other parts of the city? Thank you.
Did you mention entertainment last night? I think that's...
I would love, I would love to see some kind of entertainment district, you know, whether it's movies or theaters or something in our downtown, just so that when people come, they stay. And that's, you know, part of, I think, the element of what the planning elements were before, trying to get people to park and walk around and visit the storefronts. We can only have so many bars. We enjoy the bars and the restaurants, but you can't do two or three of them in one night. So I think if we found a way to encourage that, that's a market thing. I don't know what the city can do to do that. We have some outdoor music spaces, we have those options already, so.
Hi, Jeff Lustig. This is another way of looking at things. We can't get people to park at Harold Kord and have restaurants that are underneath them. People would rather be on the street. And if that doesn't show you any market rent for those places, they're so little, that the cost of us managing them is ridiculous. And so I always would say to your husband, that guy over there knows the numbers, that even if you gave it away for free, you couldn't, you'd build on it right now, because that's not possible. I don't know this for a fact, but I trust that you guys know the numbers. And I think those are the main two things that we have to think about in our city. And you're right, at some point, we're all going to be defending, and you're going to have trouble walking, and you're going to need golf carts, no, but you're going to need something to get there, to get the people in there. That's it.
Mrs. McGregor, I think it's really important, as we move forward with our land development regulations and codes, that we start looking at new concepts like sponge cities, zero-scaping, making sure that the rainfall can be captured, that we're receiving in the community during the wet season, and be able to use that for irrigation purposes. There's a lot that can be done in the individual owner's scale, but there's a lot that can be done as a city. And actually, some of the concepts turn into within parks, they turn into tourist attractions as well. And we're very early into exploring this, but I think it's something that we really need to dive into now and quickly, so that as we develop new regulations, that can be included as well.
Vivian Taylor. And I've heard all night, bill, bill, bill. We've got homes that are in the historic district, that are on the ground, that are flooded from these two hurricanes that we had. What are you doing to stop the water and stop the flooding? I mean, everybody's house is not built up three or four feet. So before you continue to build, think about saving some of the homes that are still in the historic districts that you have now. It makes sense. I understand growth. I'm not opposed to growth. But if you're trying to save historic, then be historic and save those houses and do something about flooding. I mean, you've got flooding all over the place. They're closing out streets, you can't even move around. So build the right thing, stop some of the flooding.
Thank you for that. And we have another workshop coming up on our flooding issues, so we'll look for some input on that. But I'm happy to say that we killed the Thousand Home Project that scooped up fifteen-point-six million dollars of one percent sales tax capital improvements money. We're going to fix what we can of the city hall, and we're going to reallocate the balance of that to our infrastructure projects. I've already done some looking at some of the other items that have been on our one percent sales tax list from way back. And it includes historic district infrastructure project, that is drainage, sidewalks, and lighting. And I would like to see that as one of the priority items that we reallocate that money to, among others. Health and safety factors across the town.
Wendy Mueller. And to back that up, Greg, I've been attending council meetings for approximately ten years in the historic district this side of forty-one, because we are supposed to be one community, but we always end up dividing. Has been promised many, many things that have never come to fruition in its belt time. You need something about it. Something else that occurred to me is, you've been talking all about the historic district and this little area, but you have PGI and Burnstour Isle, and you have, one place is deed restricted, and the other, after its fifty years, gave up its deed restrictions and went with the city's rules, which were very much in line with what the deed restrictions were. One of the things that I've noticed, because I've lost most of my yard, and it's going to be huge to repair, is the fact that we really are not Florida-friendly, we're northern-friendly. This water in year long is, to me, kind of a dumb thing. We have Florida-hardened plants and trees and shrubs and ground cover that doesn't take the water that we require. And I think that if we changed some of our homes, we could actually have a beautiful town, lots of trees and bushes and flowers and things, that we would all love, and spend a lot less on fertilizer, and a lot less on water. And I think that you need to pay attention to those, because they are, I'm pretty sure they're part of the land development regulations that we ignore.
And I'd like to reflect back on what Dr. Riebert said. You know, our land development regulations should be so that we are a sponge city. I mean, they go hand in hand together. Because when you allow seventy, eighty, ninety percent of the property to be developed, you've created nothing but flooding. So it is important, they kind of are hand in hand. We need to look at these again and make sure that the flooding is not going to increase. You know, realities hit all of us in the face. I have two houses in downtown Punta Gorda, they're both gone, both of them, along with my clothes. It was awful, not once, but twice. And it's reality that has slapped us in the face, and I think it's time for us to do something about it. We cannot ignore it, we've got to do something about it. And I will talk to you later about rising your home, raising your home up. FEMA has a program right now that's out, they want people to get online, you just apply for it. I'm not saying they're just going to write you a check right away, but you may be on a waiting list for a while, but they are giving out money right now to raise your homes up. So that's something we'll need to talk about, too.
That's perfect. Also, I know when we were talking about like our infrastructure and our old piping system, because we haven't really done a whole lot about maintaining them, and a lot of them are failing. That's why we had the perfect storm with, you know, five pipelines, you know, and irrigation all at the same time. John, I don't mean to throw you on this again, but I know you and I talked a little bit at one time, it almost looked like we were, again, we're trying to talk about maybe a separate pipe for irrigation. And I think the bridge at one time almost had some space, is that what you're saying, for a pipeline possibly to go there for our irrigation?
Joonaboo, Planning Director. Yes, a while ago, we, and we're going back almost twenty years, we had talked with Swiftmud, and we had talked to the county. We were trying, there was a sleeve that was open on the bridge. We were trying, there was a sleeve that was open on the bridge and we were looking into the possibility of getting irrigation water down the center of 41. The person that we had contact with unfortunately left Swift Mud and the whole project went downhill. We never got the reception from them that we had hoped we, that we had with the woman we were speaking with. So it never came to be that they found out that that sleeve was open and could hold the water because then the weight of the water may have done something to the bridge. There were a lot of things that needed to be reviewed, but it was a possibility we were looking into many years ago.
And on March 10th, it's actually going to be at the Wyvern, 5:30. It's limited seating, but we actually are going to have Dr. Henderson do a presentation on sponge cities if anybody's interested in it. So it's on my newsletter, but it's a great idea for us. And even if you're looking, I think Tampa is trying to do it. There's some beautiful structures and it could be a tourist area, which actually would help bring in revenue and help us with our water issues. But we, we need to worry about our infrastructure. That's a number one priority for us that we don't have. And we can't help hurricanes, but you know, we want to look at making sure that all our storm system and everything is all cleaned out and that we have the pipes that won't break.
Good afternoon. My name is Julia Moore. I live right here on Virginia Avenue. We've talked about high rises and apartments, but no one is talking about single-family homes. There's people that need homes that they can afford. You know, there's young people that would be here, but they can't afford to live here. You know, so we need to think about that, about making it comfortable for younger people. We're getting old here in Charlotte County. And my other question is, what was the idea of a roundabout in the middle of town? Who's idea was that? We have old drivers and I can see some getting confused as to which way they're supposed to go.
That was the Florida Department of Transportation.
You know, you see, our streets aren't wide enough, but we put a roundabout in the middle of town? That doesn't make sense to me. So that's my comment.
My name is Nick. How y'all doing? Hey, first I want to say thanks for coming out. This is my first city council meeting, so it's kind of cool. I hear about the bakery. I know it's back and forth about politics. My whole thing is I was born there, graduated. I've seen a lot of things change. I have friends on, as y'all call the west side. I lived on the east side. During a hurricane, with both of them happening, I do a lot of demos. So I see what you was talking about, your house got flooded. The house that I was watching, they had like five-foot water. And then I had people on this side where I'm from, they had water. So all the thing I'm saying is we can all come together, regardless of politics. I know it's a new regime in the house. But I know there's a lot of things that happened before y'all got here. So all the thing I'm asking, let's try to make the city of Punta Gorda great as we used to be. I know it was a lot of situations that we couldn't control, but if we can control it now, let's do that as a group. Doesn't matter what color race, wherever, just try to make it, come together and be one. That's all I have to say. Thank you again for coming.
Anybody else?
Hi, Kathleen Davis. I'd just like to add to what that young gentleman said, that he was born here. People have been here in this area here. This has historically been here since the 1800s. It's been single-family homes, people helping people, the whole community working together. It's a very strong history and a strong culture, but we need to take care of that. That has to be preserved. We cannot concrete over this whole place. This area here is very precious and when this is gone, it will be gone forever.
I was at the committee meeting and Bill Pramell is going to cancel your 911 project. What he says is it can only be used for non-emergency numbers and he's not willing to pay for the other transmitter, these costs. And he's saying, why would you, why would you save it? Because you'd save a million dollars a year. But he only has four spots open for the employees and will try to manage the other individuals there. And the other thing that happened today was that the city, that all the council commissioners asked for the resignation of Mr. Deutsch.
I am only standing to ask a question, a general question. And I don't have the answer to the question I'm about to ask. I, I, I was sitting, my wife and I, a pastor of this church, and watched five feet of water flow outside of this building. My question is, why is it so difficult to put in a drainage system that takes the water away from itself? Is there, is there an area around here that, that could actually hold some of this water? That could be diverted to? And that's a question, I don't really have the answer to that. But if it is, why aren't we trying to divert water in that direction? And I moved here some years ago, but I was raised in Brooklyn, East New York. They have, they have water all around and you don't see them flooding. Why? They have, they have, they have sewer systems, they have subway systems. You don't see them flooding. Why? They have overgrown buildings, skyscrapers, and they're not flooding. Why? Because they have systems to divert the water somewhere else. So we, we spend a lot of time doing things that's not solving the problem. We can build and we can grow and we can make changes. But first we got to take care of the small things. No one's house has any business giving three or four, five. I'm just leaving a house now, working on a latest house. Two of them back and back have three feet of water in their house. I'm getting ready to go back there as soon as I leave here. Because they need to get their house done. What are we doing? Or what can we do to focus on that and get the water away from here? It's not that it can't be done. And if mine is, like I just said, I don't know the answer. And if around here don't know the answer, what about, what about calling somebody that do?
That's a great question, Carol. And we have a, on the 11th of March, workshop on, it says downtown drainage, but I think we should. Yeah, and surely that was ever there. On the 11th of March, 5:30 at the Yacht Club. I'd love that. Have you there?
I'll be here.
We can deal with the drainage and do a much better job. We are clearing out the drains and, you know, the existing drains. It's full of silt, mountain and valley, broad, all kinds of silt. They're already probably pretty full. You can't stop the ocean and then New York doesn't have tidal surge, right? Because it doesn't have hurricanes. But when you have a tidal surge that comes in five feet covering everything, you can't stop that. But we can stop the rainwater. And if our floodgates were working properly, then we would probably be able to deal with some of the water that doesn't escape when it should out of those storm drains. So we do certainly have issues that we can fix.
So New York doesn't have as many hurricanes. But to say that they don't, those hurricanes go up these coasts.
You might have me wrong on that.
And the water surge does come here, but it's still controlled. And I'm, I'm not saying that we can control everything. That's impossible. But we can do something to go in on and divert that water, whether it's shutting down a park when we don't need it and opening it up when we do. And someone checking before the storm come to make sure that it's drained. And not waiting until it's come, it comes and then, and then take care of it. That's like putting the, as they say, the horse in front of behind the buck. And we've got to, we've got to start doing that now. We can talk about all this other stuff, but if you don't take care of the drainage problem, they say that that was a hundred-year storm. So we had two hundred-year storms in less than two years.
Two weeks.
No, less than two weeks. So, so the whole point is, that's, that's something that needs to be focused on now. And guess what? Hurricane season, there is start back.
Anybody else want to talk or say anything? Sounds like we have a lot to think about and a lot to do, but I, I love everybody's idea. And like I said, we definitely are going to make sure that we look at our infrastructure and our drainage to try to help prevent a lot of this that's going on. High tide, sunny days and the streets are flooding. That's not good. So we want to try to stop that. Like I said, Mother Nature, you know, we have things that we're going to have to try to do. I know that when we were up in Tallahassee, they let Missy know that there's tiger dams. So we're going to see what we can do with utilizing some of those to help protect some of the buildings. I don't know what else we can do, but we, unfortunately, the biggest thing that we know is nothing is cheap. And we're gonna, we're going to have to just tighten our belt buckle and look at what we can do without versus what needs to be done right now. And right now, infrastructure is our number one priority.
Jennifer Faulkner, deputy city clerk. I just wanted, in, in the event that we were getting ready to wrap up, I just wanted to really quick, once again, thank St. Mary Church Pastor Thomas and all of his staff. We didn't, didn't hear about it on the way in. The church is doing a dinner in the dining hall next door. $10 a plate. It is a fundraising opportunity for the church's pantry, which services a lot of folks in this community and which had a lot of damage from the storms. So if you're hungry, I know I am certainly hungry, please stick around for that and contribute to that great cause. Thank you again, Pastor Thomas.
Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, reading is a giant. Thank you so much for requiring.